Start it. Oh, we see we have a lot of wonderful young people in here today. To give our invocation today, the Chair recognizes Reverend William J. Scott III, Pastor of Harold O. Davis Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come before you to say thank you. We thank you, God, for a day that we've never seen before. We pray, God, that you will bless your city officials, leaders, Father, as you deliberate and discuss certain matters that concern this city. We need you, Lord. We need you more at this time than we ever needed you before. We pray, God, that you would strengthen our leaders when they're weak, build them up when they're torn down. Philadelphia needs you right now, Father. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 11th, 2017, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 11th, 2017 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moving probably second. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 11th, 2017 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is the request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to take a moment to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We appreciate the fact that you want to see what we do. I hope your experience here today is a knowledgeable one, but much more so, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, who will present a resolution recognizing the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Would Patricia Alford and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium?
(Singing) Oh, Delta Sigma... Oh, Delta... Got some here, but we need some more. Oh, Delta... Calling all Deltas to the floor. Oh, Solta's... Got some here, but we need some more. Oh, Delta... Calling all Deltas to the floor. Oh, Delta... We got some here, but we need some more. Oh, Delta...
Thank you, Councilwoman. And also joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Johnson and Councilman Green, Councilman Don, Councilman Greenlee, and Councilwoman Blackwell. And I would ask that if anyone has an electronic device that makes any noise, such as the noise that we just heard, can you please turn it off? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning to everyone. First, I want to start by saying a hearty thank you to all of our colleagues in the City Council of Philadelphia, along with the staff who are dawning their red today. The men with ties, the ladies with some shade of red. So we want to say thank you all. On today, we have the great honor and privilege of continuing a tradition in this body that was started by our former colleague and Delta Sister, Councilwoman Marion Tascow, and that is honoring Delta Sigma Theta Sorority's Quaker City Alumni Chapter's Social Action Committee, and very specifically, the work they do with young people in schools in the city of Philadelphia and surrounding counties about educating them relative to local government. And City Council is one of the primary focuses of their agendas. And with that in mind, Mr. President, I just want to state for the record that Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 13th, 1913, on the campus of Howard University by 22 dynamic collegiate women. And because we're coming up, I think we have three more years. 2020 is on its way. I want to note for the record, because sometimes people see these women, and I don't care if you're talking about us or another organization, and folks think they just like to get dressed up in a certain color and come together and sip tea. But I want you to know, the first public act of this organization was our participation in the Women's Suffrage March in Washington, DC. And what makes that, to me, such a meaningful act is that as African-American women, there were some people who wanted to put them in the box and say that the only issues they should be advocating for were those that were associated with race. But these 22 women said, "We're women too, and we have a place in this struggle." So when you think of Delta, I want you to think of that work. The resolution reads as follows. Recognizing and honoring the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's Quaker City Alumni Chapter Social Action Committee on the occasion of the 14th year of Delta Days at City Council. And before we get started with that "our" soror, Blondell Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman, will make comments before we start.
Good morning, colleagues and members of City Council, along with our guests. The underpinning of Delta Sigma Theta is service. The underpinning of Delta Sigma Theta is service. Women become actively engaged in this organization because they believe in service. Gandhi said it best. The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in service to others. We need you to remember that while we enjoy each other's professional endeavors. The glue for us is that we believe in service. And I'm thrilled to say, a year ago, I stood here as a member of Delta Sigma Theta, and a year later, I stand here as the mother of a daughter who joined Delta Sigma Theta.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping this wonderful tradition. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, founded in 1913 by 22, as the Councilwoman Parker said, diligent collegiate women on the campus of Howard University, has blossomed into the largest African-American women's organization in the United States. And...
Whereas Delta Sigma Theta boasts 20 statewide chapters in Pennsylvania from Philadelphia to York and Allegheny Counties. Whereas the Quaker City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated was chartered in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on October 17th, 1976, by 27 African-American women to proudly execute the organization's five-point programmatic thrust, which includes the following: economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Over the past 40 years, this chapter has strategically expanded its membership to more than 150 local women working to build a more connected and informed community built on the word and work of service. And whereas members of the Quaker City Alumni Social Action Committee have dynamically, dynamatically continued in their foremothers' footsteps to promote social and political activism by addressing voting rights, supporting voter education, and hosting numerous voter registration drives and voter phone banks, as well as advocating for adequate educational funding, quality after-school programs, and access to early childhood education for all children. And whereas the students joining us today represent the sorority's dedication to ensuring that our future leaders have firsthand knowledge of how local government works as they are developing into the next generation that will carry the torch of social and political leadership. And...
Whereas these didactic women have assumed the charge of ensuring that communities receive well-rounded support through various events and programs, including their much-anticipated annual health fair, renowned Delta Academy and Delta Gems programs, annual college expo, and the infamous dessert hour. And...
Whereas the women of Delta, artists in their own right, also founded the Arts and Letters Committee, which provides an arena for local poets and musicians to showcase their talents at the annual Artist Cafe, while also serving as a fundraiser to benefit the ongoing activities at the historic Freedom Theater. And...
Whereas the Quaker City Alumni Chapter continues to explore new avenues to collaborate with local organizations to tackle the issues that impact Philadelphia residents in an effort to effectively resolve today's challenges by implementing much-needed programming and advancing essential policy initiatives. And...
Whereas as the husband, son, brother, and more recently, uncle of members of this phenomenal sisterhood of service, the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated... Sorry, that's a capatrina. ...continue to be magnificent examples of servant leaders with an uncompromising commitment to their community, which serves as a driving force to carry on the mission of Delta Days at City Council. Now therefore be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes and honors the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's Quaker City Alumni Chapter's Social Action Committee on the occasion of the 14th year of Delta Days at City Council. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Social Action Committee of Quaker City Alumni Chapter as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. And, Mr. President, I just want to note for the record, because some people said, "Who are some Deltas we may know?" Wanted to quickly run through this list. Sadie T. M. Alexander, Shirley Chisholm, Ruby D., Dorothy Height, Barbara Jordan, Shirley Ralph, Angela Basset, Nikki Giovanni, Betty Shabazz, Lena Horn, Cicely Tyson, Gwen Ifill, and our very own Connie Clayton in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. 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 And at this time, the Chair recognizes Ms. Alfred for remarks.
Good morning.
Morning.
On behalf of our chapter president, Dr. Claudette Stone of Quaker City Alumni Chapter, and the 1,044 chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated nationally and internationally, I bring you greetings. My name is Patricia Alfred, and I'm the Chair of Quaker City Social Action Committee, and my co-chair, Annie Williams Gadsden, is over here. Once again, we celebrate the youth in Philadelphia and the surrounding areas by inviting them to observe and experience the political process of government, and especially that of our great city, Philadelphia. We want the youth of Philadelphia, who are our future leaders, to understand that changes can be made, but it needs to be developed, discussed, and brought forth to benefit all of its citizens. Forty years ago, QCA was chartered to assist this great city in community activities that benefits and enhances the lives of its citizens. Some of the people before me have named some of the things: the toileting library, the Delta Academy, Delta Gems scholarship programs. And we have given out over $100,000 in scholarships to young people in the Philadelphia area. We've had college preps. We have social action forums on Age and Gracefully, 1 and 2, because we really care about our senior citizens. Domestic violence, we're not going to step back because some people feel it's hurting them. We want to make sure that we take care of our citizens who have been abused. We have presented candidates for elected offices. Now, I want to let you know the commitment of coming down here today. We have three of our past presidents here, and what they've stepped forward. We have Florence Oliver, Patricia Evans, and Leslie Cousin-Mod. They feel... These three ladies have felt that social action is the core of the volunteerism we do. We do a lot of things, but social action is one of it. Our chapter's commitment to social action in Philadelphia will never stop. On your desk is an ink pen. Please hold it up. I left it on the desk, the council people. Okay? Turn it on. There's a light. You didn't get one? Please. Somebody got your pen.
Where the police?
We want you to know that Quaker City Chapter members are working hard to make our city outstanding and a city of sisterly love. Thank you very, very much.
Council will be at ease. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who present resolutions honoring St. Hubert's bowling team and St. Hubert's cheerleading team. Would Liz Ann Pando and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Heenan, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Don, and Councilman Green. And Councilwoman Blackwell. And Councilman O'Neal.
Are there any Bambis in the house? I mean, I can't hear you. Are there any Bambis in the house? Can we hear it? I know. I know that Bambis have some incredible spirit. I've seen it over the years, and you truly represent Northeast Philadelphia. And we have a lot of champions up here, a lot of Bambi champions, who excel in many, many areas. You know, we have two resolutions to honor state champions and champions in the Catholic League, not just cheerleading, but bowling. But not only are they excelling in their love and passion in sports, but they have all excelled, not just as a team, but as a school in academics, receiving over $19 million, $19.6 million in college scholarships. So congratulations. Congratulations to the awesome young women and future of our city. But congratulations to Liz Ann, who is our leader of St. Hubert's, and all the administration, who does a fantastic job. You know, right now, we're going to start with bowling. Now, bowling, you know, in other sports would say, well, I guess in bowling too, right? It's a repeat. So they repeat it, all right, for their championship. 64 wins, so they were 64-0. And today, we honor St. Hubert's bowling team in winning the 2017 repeat Philadelphia Catholic League Championship. Whereas...
The St. Hubert High School bowling team was in first place all year, going a record-setting 56-0 during the regular season, the likes of which have never been accomplished before in Catholic League play. And...
Whereas the Bambis crushed bitter rival Little Flower High School in the Catholic League semifinals to move on to the championship. Little Flower was also sadly beaten by St. Hubert's in last year's championship game. And whereas St. Hubert's was pitted against Bonner Prendy in the championship game, the top two seeds in the Catholic League battling it out for bragging rights. And...
Whereas the Bambis refused to be denied their perfect season, sweeping Bonner 4-0 at the AMF Bristol Pike Lane to cap off a Storybrooke ending, earning a Catholic League title. And whereas, in addition to their Catholic League championship, five student athletes earned first-team All-Catholic bowling honors this season: sophomore Gabrielle Smith, juniors Michelle Morrissey, Shannon Lee, and Reagan McGinnis, and senior Tori Cross. And...
My wife's a Bambi, so I'm going to read this very carefully. Whereas Hubert's bowlers finished the year taking the top three spots overall in the Catholic League. Rounding out the awards was the Honor for Catholic League Most Valuable Player, which went to Michelle Morrissey. And whereas, the Bambis finished their perfect season with a record of 64 wins and zero losses. Now therefore...
Therefore, resolved by the City Council of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and recognize the St. Hubert's School Bowling Team on their Philadelphia Catholic League championship. Resolve further that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the head coach, Pat Hamel, and the members of the 2017 Philadelphia Catholic League Champions as further evidencing, all right, the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations, champs.
The same, Ms. Pando?
We'll go right into the next one. Under my guidance, right, that I failed to execute. So now we have national champs in cheerleading. All right? And I got to tell you, over the past four years, St. Hubert's, whether it's varsity or JV, has been national champs. So they are absolutely an elite team when it comes to cheerleading, not only in the city of Philadelphia, not only in Northeast City of Philadelphia, all right, but nationally, they are recognized as an elite team. And I have to tell you, representing half of Northeast Philadelphia, and I know Councilman O'Neal will attest to, you know, people want to go to St. Hubert's, all right, because it's a place of community for many, many different areas that they feel competitive, comfortable with each other's, and a sense of community along with its academic successes that they have. So we have, and we're honoring, again, the varsity team for national, for being national champs. They won one in 2012, and they won one this year, or this year in 2017. So with that being said, I want to again thank our, you know, president of St. Hubert's, Liz Ann Pando, for her outstanding job in administrations, as teachers, the coaches, the volunteers. And yet, we forget the parents, all right, and the guardians of all these kids, who take them to meets, who take them out of town, who raise money. They fundraise. It's tough to scrape up all the resources that they need, but they did it, all right? And they were success. And that's what brings a community closer together. That's what brings these young women closer together and why they're such an elite team. So honoring the St. Hubert's High School Cheerleading Team on winning the National School Cheerleading Championship. And let me be very blunt about this. National is very, very important. We do a lot of honors, but you know what? This is a big, big nation, and to be national champions is very, very important. Whereas the National High School Cheerleading Championship is held at Walt Disney World Resort in Orlando, Florida, and is televised nationally on ESPN and ESPN2 to more than 100 million homes in 32 countries annually. And...
Whereas, in order to get to nationals, Hubert's had to overcome many obstacles, including fundraising a large amount of money to attend the event and replacing injured cheerleaders. And whereas, to prepare for their routine, the team spends countless hours training and practicing year-round. In addition to practicing, the team performs at All-Father Judge Football and Basketball Games. And...
Whereas during the competition, the squad performs a two-and-a-half-minute routine packed with stunts, pyramids, elite tumbling skills, cheers, and dance. These routines take a tremendous amount of endurance, strength, and stamina. And whereas, St. Hubert's competed against 25 teams in the large varsity division, which means competing with 20 girls on their squad. And...
I think I need to go on a diet to move around this podium. Whereas this... Yeah, tumble. Whereas this is the 12th year that St. Hubert's cheerleading has been to the NHSCC and their second national championship for varsity. And whereas, the head coach of the team is Lisa McNeesby, and she is assisted by Paul Ballantyne, Mary K... Ballantyne, Mary Kate McKnight, and Kristen Mann, and...
And whereas, the St. Hubert Cheerleading Program includes three teams with a total of twenty-seven cheerleaders. And whereas, in addition to practice and schoolwork, and practice and schoolwork, and practice and schoolwork, the girls still find time to volunteer with various charitable organizations, including the Athletes Helping Athletes. Now therefore...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and commend the St. Hubert High School Cheerleading Team on winning the National High School Cheerleading Championship. Resolve further that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the St. Hubert Cheerleaders and their coaches, further evidencing the sincere appreciation and admiration of this legislative body. Sponsored by Councilman Bobby Heenan and co-sponsored by all Councilmembers.
Thank you. And the Chair recognizes Ms. Pando for remarks.
Thank you, Councilman Heenan, and Council President Clark, and the rest of City Council for this wonderful honor to be here today. My name is Liz Ann Pando, and I'm the proud president of these wonderful girls and their accomplishments. We thank you for honoring St. Hubert Catholic High School for Girls and their athletic achievements in this very special way. St. Hubert's has been educating women of integrity and faith for seventy-five years, and doing it through spirituality, scholarship, service, and sisterhood. And we can boast thirty thousand alum, obviously, we have a couple here in the audience, and a couple gentlemen married to our alum. They have become, they've gone on to become doctors, lawyers, businesswomen, medical professionals, mothers, and grandmothers. It comes no surprise to myself or to the faculty administration that these girls, when coached with their talents, can reach heights of this level. It is with special thanks, I'd like to recognize today, our cheerleading national championship coaches, Lisa McDesby, Mary Kay McKnight, Kristen Mann, and Paul Ballantyne. And are also our bowling coaches, Catholic League Champions for two years in a row now, Pat Hampl and his son, Pat Hampl Jr. It goes with special mention to the bowling team for their perfect season, winning all twelve matches, and having sixty-four and oh for every single game they won. It's like a shutout. So, we are so grateful for those who have coached, and all those parents who have given such sacrifice to help our girls reach these wonderful accomplishments and use their talents in such a way. We're very blessed, and we thank you again for this resolution and recognition today in reflection of our girls and our students' achievements. Thank you.
Council of Aedes. Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Homero Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bill, Bill Number 170335. And I am pleased to advise you that on May seventeen, 2017, I signed the remaining bills, which were passed by a council at its session on May four, 2017. And then on May seventeen, 2017, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on May eleven, 2017. Bill numbers 160680, 170015, 170016, 170205, 170308, 170329, 170330, and 170332. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Councilmanate District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 327 by striking from the City Plan Priestley Street, from Lucan Street to Herschel Road, and Herschel Road from Peyton Street to Priestley Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Washington Services Corp. for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at eighty-seven forty-seven Frankfurt Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement for use by the city of certain, of certain portion, portion of the premises located at sixty-six oh-one New State Road. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at fifteen hundred John F. Kennedy Boulevard. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at fourteen twenty-five Arch Street. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating the southerly eighteen-feet-wide portion of Vine Street from Eighteenth Street to a point approximately one hundred fifty feet eastwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Market Street, North Salford Street, Filbert Street, and North Fifty-Ninth Street for further conveyance. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 311 by striking from the City Plan and vacating the legally open portions of Westview Street from Springbank Street to Hoarder Street. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers 240 and 296 by placing on the City Plan Nixon Street from the existing north-westwardly terminus of Nixon Street, northwest of Shawmont Avenue, to Port Royal Avenue, not on City Plan. Placing on the City Plan River Road from Port Royal Avenue, not on City Plan, to a point approximately ten feet southeast of the Philadelphia Montgomery County line, and placing on the City Plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Gray's Partners by its agent, Corman Commercial Properties, for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at three thousand nine Gray's Ferry Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department and the Department of Commerce on behalf of the city to enter into a contract for the provision of shuttle bus services at Philadelphia International Airport. And an ordinance amending Chapter nineteen thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area to provide for extension of certain benefits. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number fifty-eight by striking from the City Plan and vacating Pearl Street from Thirteenth Street to Broad Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. Today, I offer one bill and three resolutions, and I wish to say thank you to Councilmembers Green, Bass, Tottenberger, Parker, Jones, Kim, Heenan, Dom, Greenlee, and Oh, who co-sponsored one or all three resolutions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of Chapter fourteen six hundred entitled Use Regulations by amending the green roof calculations.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the month of May as National Bike Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and celebrating the 2017 Small Business Week celebration in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and congratulating Philadelphia's students, educators, and administrators for the School District of Philadelphia selection by the United States Department of Education as a 2017 District Sustainability Awardee.
Also, this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Girard Avenue, Forty-first Street, Parkside Avenue, Girard Avenue, and Railroad right-of-way.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Cobb's Creek Parkway between Hazel and Cedar Avenues, both sides.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Mr. President, on your behalf, I offer three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Section fourteen two oh-two of the Philadelphia Code entitled Rules and Measurements by providing for further measurement exclusions, amending Section fourteen five oh-two entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by modifying the subsection entitled Rittenhouse Square.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating the southerly eighteen-feet-wide portion of Vine Street from Eighteenth Street to a point approximately one hundred fifty feet eastwardly therefrom.
Refer to committee.
And a... And an ordinance to amend the master plan for Temple University and to approve the proposed addition to eighteen-ten Leocorus Walk.
Also, refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer eight bills, one privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution, and I wish to be recognized on the title of resolution recalling Bill Number one seven zero two six five is ready for the motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Cotman Avenue, Crispin Street, Frankfurt Avenue, Cheltenham Avenue, Bustleton Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Sheffield Avenue, Leon Street, Sully Avenue, Frankfurt Avenue, Stanwood Street, and Erdrick Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bridge Street, Harbison Avenue, Tulip Street, Hegerman Street, Devereaux Avenue, Torresdale Avenue, Robin Street, Van Dyke Street, Unruh Avenue, Keystone Street, Devereaux Street Extended, and Delaware Expressway. And an ordinance to amend Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising certain provisions of Sections fourteen, of Chapter two fourteen two hundred entitled Definitions, and fourteen nine hundred Signs. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement for use by the city of certain portion of premises located at sixty-six oh-one New State Road. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Washington Service Corp. for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at eighty-seven forty-seven Frankfurt Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at fourteen twenty-five Arch Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at fifteen hundred John F. Kennedy Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those eight bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a privilege resolution recognizing May fourteen, 2017, to May twenty-one, 2017 as National Police Week in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution requesting the Mayor to return to Council Bill Number one seven zero two six five entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Devereaux Avenue Extended, Keystone Street, Princeton Avenue, Keystone Street, Cotman Avenue Extended, Milner Street, Bligh Avenue Extended, and the Delaware River for the purpose of reconsideration by the Council of the vote by which said bill passed Council.
And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of Council be suspended to permit the consideration of the resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions, one privileged, and co-sponsored by Councilman Tollenberger, Greenlee, Green, Johnson, Oh, and Bass. Three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Numbers two forty and two ninety-six by placing on the City Plan Nixon Street from an existing north-westwardly terminus of Nixon Street, northwest of Shawmont Avenue, to Port Royal Avenue, not on City Plan. Placing on the City Plan River Road from Port Royal Avenue, not on City Plan, to a point approximately ten feet southeast of the Philadelphia Montgomery County line.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number three eleven by striking from the City Plan and vacating the legally open portions of Westview Street from Springbank Street to Hoarder Street.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Market Street, North Salford Street, Filbert Street, and North Fifty-Ninth Street for further conveyance.
Also, refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Reverend Kirk T. Berlinbach for, who will be leaving St. Timothy's Episcopal Church after fourteen years of dedicated service to the Roxborough community.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city owned lots and pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the fourth ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one non-privileged resolution and three bills, one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the sports stadium special purpose district master plan in the area bounded by Darian Street, Packer Avenue, Seventh Street, and Patterson Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with Gray's Ferry Partners by its agent, Corman Commercial Properties, for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at three thousand nine Gray's Ferry Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Department and the Department of Commerce on behalf of the city to enter into a contract for the provision of shuttle bus services at Philadelphia International Airport.
And that's refer to committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter nineteen thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and District and Strategic Development Area to provide for extension of certain benefits.
And that will also be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution naming Paschal Avenue between South Sixty-four Street and South Sixty-Fifth Street Albert Willis Way.
Next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Third Street, Burke Street, Sixth Street, and Lehigh Avenue.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring the Urban League of Philadelphia on the occasion of its one-hundredth anniversary. of its 100th anniversary.
This week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing, honoring, and congratulating the 2017 Philadelphia Business Journal's 40 Under 40 class for their hard work and dedication to excellence in their representation of their respective industries and the city of Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Toltenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have one bill and one privileged resolution that is introduced by myself and Councilman Curtis Jones, and at the appropriate time, I would like to speak on that resolution.
You can do it. Or let... Introduce it first.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce it.
And ordinance amending section 9605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled towing by increasing the amount of the fine that a towing company must pay for improper cleanup of an accident scene.
Councilman, you want to read... You want to speak on the legislation? On the bill?
No, on the resolution.
On the resolution? Okay. That will be referred to committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing New Holland Agriculture and the Pennsylvania Future Farmers of America for their volunteer work on May 5, 2017 at WB Saul High School in Roxborough.
Chair recognizes Councilman Toltenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to also thank very much Councilman Curtis Jones for co-sponsoring or introducing this with me, and all members of council. And I want to really stress the fact, this is a big deal. The New Holland Machinery Company, although not known well in Philadelphia, is a major player in agribusiness across the world, and for them to pick a school in Philadelphia, an agricultural school, to help and come down and volunteer their services is something very, very special indeed. I was there at their day of service where they cleaned out and completely redid and painted the Dairy Born, which agriculture teaches children and students science, it teaches math, it teaches all the skills for good citizenship, and also is a major business in the world. And all you have to do is take a look at this week's Wall Street Journal to know how big agriculture is in the United States. So I look forward to its passage, and I thank all members for co-sponsoring it with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the provision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 58 by striking from the city plan and vacating Pearl Street from 13th Street to Broad Street and reserving a placing on the city plan of right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes.
And that will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution, and I'd like to be heard after the resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
One bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by creating a tax foreclosure diversion program that requires housing counseling assistance, updating tax installment payment agreements to help taxpayers with financial hardships, and other related items.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution commending and thanking the police, first responders, and witnesses for their immediate rescue efforts of Charles W. Henry School students, teachers, and chaperones involved in a bus crash while on their way to Washington, DC.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really just had to say some thank yous with the introduction of that resolution. And while we have all heard the phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child," this week that phase is particularly relevant in the aftermath of the bus accident that occurred this past Monday when a group of eighth graders and their teachers and chaperones from the CW Henry School in West Mounary were on their way to Washington, DC for their end-of-year class trip. The rescue efforts right after the accident by our police, who just happened to be right behind the bus, as well as by... as well as the help by family members, fallen police officers, and just good samitarians on I-95 was truly a godsend. On the day of the accident, I was grateful for the support of State Representative Chris Raff, who also joined me at CW Henry, and the principal, staff, and parents. We just really want to give a particular shout-out to... Special thanks to Principal Fatima Rogers for jumping into action, the Philadelphia School District, the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, all educators, parents, principals, and volunteers who were on-site, on the scene at the school with us to see what could they do to be of assistance. Of course, the Philadelphia Police Department, all of the Police Department jumped into action, and especially Inspector Anthony Washington out of the Northwest Division and his group, who were just really, again, a godsend, and the folks especially who were on I-95 as the crash occurred. You know, it just... It just happened that this bus was behind the school's bus, and they were en route to Washington, DC for a different event, but they were recruits and police officers and family members of fallen officers, and everyone just jumped into action. The Office of Emergency Management, and for those who just really offered prayers and positive thoughts, I just really had to say a particular thank you to everyone for the outpouring of love and support. And also, we did have a staffer who had a child who was on the bus, who, thank God, is fine, shaken up, but absolutely fine, and so we want to thank everyone for reaching out and being in contact with our office. And we've heard and gotten so much support from all of our colleagues, I just really wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer three non-privileged resolutions co-sponsored by council members Squilla, Toltenberger, Dom, Green, Parker, Reynolds Brown, Bass, Jones, and Heenan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt House Bill Number 393, which would uncap the Pennsylvania Film Production Tax Credit Program.
That's the... That will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution creating the Philadelphia Film Advisory Task Force.
And that will also be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the Philadelphia Streets Department to post the fine for violation of the electric vehicle parking space restriction on-site and calling upon the Philadelphia Parking Authority to establish a dedicated call line to report violations of electric vehicle parking space restrictions and to vigorously enforce such electric vehicle parking space restrictions.
And next week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We have no reports from committee today. We will now move to special business. We will proceed under a special order of business, a motion to withdraw bill number 170009. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 170009 was introduced on January 26, 2017, and was referred to the Committee on Rules. I would now like to withdraw the bill from further consideration by the council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the clerk to read the title of the bill.
Bill number 170009 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Silverwood Street, Gay Street, Baker Street, and Carson Street, and to adopt the master plan for the former St. Mary of the Assumption Catholic Church and adjacent parcels, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that bill number 170009 be withdrawn.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. Bill number 170009 be withdrawn. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes, and bill number 170009 is withdrawn. Thank you very much. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 170482, 170484, 170486, 170489, 170490, 170335A, 170282. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Before considering our public comment session, let me tell you what the rules are associated with that. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. If you have not signed up for the bill or resolution to testify on, you may do so at the table to my left. When you go to the podium at the middle of the council chambers, you will see a device. That device has a light on it. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines to conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Don Garret.
Is that working?
Commenting on 170335.
Morning. Hello, I'm Don Garret, Vice President of the Burrhome Community Town Watch and Civic Association. We serve the Burrhome community in lower northeast Philadelphia. I'm here today to show my support for bill number 170335 introduced by Councilwoman Sherrell Parker. The biggest obstacle for our organization in determining whether or not to support a project is lack of information. Despite our best efforts to communicate with applicants, on many occasions, we do not have basic details about projects until our community meetings. This makes it difficult for our members to fully understand the scope of the matter and ask informed questions. The proposed project information form will be a great educational tool for our residents. The Burrhome Civic Association is working hard to revitalize our business quarter. We welcome new businesses to our community and support zoning variances that will help our neighborhood thrive. If the project information form was a mandated document, it would give us a greater ability to do just that by suggesting tweaks to projects to ensure they do not adversely affect existing businesses. The project information form helps educate community participants and further professionalizes the zoning process. The result of this common sense legislation is a better working relationship between businesses and residents. Thank you, Council President Clark. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to provide testimony today. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Ken Yang.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. President. Hello, I am Ken Yang, Executive Director of the Department of Housing Counseling at Greater Philadelphia Asian Social Service Center, GPAS. GPAS serves the Philadelphia community from our home in Alney Logan, contributing to multifaceted neighborhood development. We provide a wide array of social services that include emergency energy assistance, housing counseling, food bank programs, community vacant lot maintenance, substance abuse, outpatient counseling, and DUI programs. GPAS is also proud to be able to provide the community with opportunities to participate in the neighborhood planning and development process as both a NAC program agency and an RCO. I am here today to show my support for bill number 170335 introduced by Councilwoman Sherrell Parker. On behalf of GPAS, I would like to express our full and unreserved support of Councilwoman Parker's proposed project information form legislation. In accord with the thoughts expressed by many fellow RCOs during a meeting that Councilwoman Parker specially held to introduce us to the bill, GPAS feels that implementation of the project information form will greatly strengthen the citywide RCO process by introducing a standardized source of key development information. This development information, which the applicant would be required to provide directly, would have the clear effect of increasing developer accountability and empowering RCOs of all experience levels and the communities that they serve. In that respect, we think it fitting that this bill was introduced by Councilwoman Parker, as it is in keeping with both the level of accountability and the style of participatory leadership that has marked Councilwoman Parker's tenure in the 9th District. Thank you, Council President Clark.
Thank you very much for your testimony today.
Joe Danahell. Commenting on 170486, 170335, and 160720.
Morning.
Good morning. This is official decree of the people and red man Danbus Quillornton, and as such requires immediate action and remedy. For too long, Philadelphia government has continued willfully to violate laws and constitutions. The Fifth Amendment states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, property, without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken without just compensation first paid." For 23 years, I have not been allowed to use my home, but I have had to pay all the bills, legal costs, interest, replacement housing costs. This is a clear violation of the rule of law and constitutions. Upon notification of my government created plight, council, mayor, and other oath-bound officials are not above the law and must provide constitutionally required immediate remedy and change the process that caused this to occur to a constitutionally compliant process. Why has no trial by jury ever been allowed? Why have numerous officials opposed my Seventh Amendment trial by jury several times? Resolution is required. If government doesn't want to do its job, then the sovereign people must be allowed by grand jury or trial by jury to provide immediate remedy. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, PA Constitution, Article 1, Section 1 through 11, 26 PACSA, 703, 705, 708, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call upon the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 23 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath-violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color-of-law government must have its charter government revoked until constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require constitutional laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate the oath of law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to leave chambers early on official business. We have Governor Wolf coming to tour with Councilwoman Parker dubs a middle neighborhood in Winfield, and would like to be recorded voting aye on all bills.
Um, is he bringing any money?
I'll check.
Because, you know, you can stop off in the 5th district, you know, right here.
That's the official business.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be... Let the record reflect that, Councilman Jones, in your voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Yes, in resolutions.
The record shall reflect that, Councilman. Thank you.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 170482?
A resolution also naming the 5800 block of Ray Street as Reverend Albert F. Campbell Way in honor of Reverend Dr. Albert F. Campbell to commemorate his 47 years of preaching at Mount Carmel Baptist Church.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170482 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170484.
A resolution also naming Broad Street from Christian Street to Carpenter Street, Boys to Men Boulevard to recognize and honor Boys to Men's legacy as an iconic R&B group and an example to Philadelphia's aspiring musical artists.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 170484 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170486.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one seven oh forty-six is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh forty-nine.
A resolution recognizing the critical role that guidance counselors play in meeting students' academic, social, and emotional needs and urging the school district of Philadelphia to devote additional resources to expanding the number of counselors in high schools with the highest needs.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Council President, I call for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one seven oh forty-nine is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh four nine oh.
A resolution supporting House Bill thirteen oh two, which would prohibit Pennsylvania law enforcement agencies from using state resources to investigate, interrogate, detain, or arrest people for immigration enforcement purposes.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Let the record reflect that there are three nays. Do you, would you like? The record shall reflect that Councilman Taubenberger, Councilman O'Neill, and Councilman O voted nay. Resolution one seven oh four nine oh is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh three three five A.
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning and Title eighteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled commerce to provide for the preparation and distribution of project information forms with respect to certain development projects, to revise the requirements for neighborhood notice and meetings, and to make related changes.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones is voting aye. Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Ayes are sixteen, and ayes is zero. Majority members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker. One seven oh two eighty-two.
An ordinance amending Chapter fourteen nine hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled signs by providing for new sign controls entitled nineteen hundred Market Street Digital Display Sign Regulations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment on your behalf to bill number one seven zero two eighty-two. Copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of that amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Bill number one seven oh two eighty-two has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. Okay. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution requiring?
I'm sorry, oh, hold on, Mr. Decker. Hold on one second, I forgot. Councilman Heenan, we had a bill.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I had stepped out and want to be recorded aye on all bills and resolution in my absence.
Thank you. The record shall reflect Councilman Heenan, his voting aye on all bills and resolution. Thank you, Councilman.
A resolution recognizing the month of May as National Bike Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the two thousand seventeen Business Week Celebration in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and congratulating Philadelphia's students, educators, and administrators for the school district of Philadelphia's selection by the United States Department of Education as a two thousand seventeen district sustainability awardee introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May fourteen two thousand seventeen to May twenty-one two thousand seventeen as National Police Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for adoption and a resolution. Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution requesting the mayor to return to council bill number one seven zero two six five entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Deveraux Avenue Extended, Keystone Street, Princeton Avenue, Keystone Street, Cotman Avenue Extended, Milner Street, Blye Avenue Extended, and the Delaware River for the purpose of reconsideration by the council of the vote by which said bill passed council introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for adoption and a resolution. Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Reverend Kirk T. Brolundack, who will be leaving Saint Timothy's Episcopal Church after fourteen years of dedicated service to the Roxborough community introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Urban League of Philadelphia on the occasion of its one-hundredth anniversary introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing honoring and congratulating the two thousand seventeen Philadelphia Business Journal's forty-under-forty class for their hard work and dedication to excellence and to their, in their, in representation of their respective industries and the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing New Holland Agriculture and the Pennsylvania Future Farmers of America for their volunteer work on May fifth two thousand seventeen at WB Saul High School in Roxborough introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commending and thanking the police, first responders, and witnesses for their immediate rescue efforts of Charles W. Henry School students, teachers, and chaperones involved in a bus crash while on their way to Washington, DC introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
Moved in probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move into special business. The chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion regarding special business.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of special business at this time. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Decker, please read the letter from the mayor.
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am returning here with, as requested by your resolution adopted May eighteen two thousand seventeen, bill number one seven zero two six five entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Deveraux Avenue Extended, Keystone Street, Princeton Avenue, Keystone Street, Cotman Avenue Extended, Milner Street, Blye Avenue Extended, and the Delaware River for the Purpose of Reconsideration by the Council of the Vote by Which Said Bill Passed Council."
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion that council reconsider the vote by which bill number one seven oh two sixty-five was passed.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and majority of all members having voted affirm that the motion carries and the vote by which bill number one seven oh two sixty-five was passed has been reconsidered. The chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to bill number one seven zero two six five. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second that the bill, that the amendment to bill number one seven oh two sixty-five be adopted. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and bill number one seven oh two six five has been amended. The bill will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? There being none. Are there any speeches on behalf of the majority? And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know we just concluded with our primary election on Tuesday, and all of the campaigns, I'm sure, are trying to get some rest. And our constituents, I think, were very, very tolerant because I didn't get any calls on yesterday. But on this morning, Mr. President, we received calls from residents throughout the ninth reminding us that there were posters on trees and electrical poles that needed to be removed in their neighborhoods. And I know it seems like it's something small, but when you're a homeowner and you're walking up and down your street and you see them, they become a sense of blight. So we just asked all of the candidates if they would sort of work with their teams. Although the election is over, the campaign is still underway until those signs are removed. The next thing I wanted to do, Mr. President, was to say a hearty thank you, and I want to start with the chief co-sponsors, Councilwoman Maria Canona Sanchez and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Dom, who was a great help. He's been deemed, you know, the chief connector for his help with the project information form legislation, and a special thanks to all of my colleagues for doing what we hope will add some transparency to the land use process and development process in our neighborhoods. In addition to that, I want to invite all council members to join the women of Delta Sigma Theta sorority afterwards for a luncheon immediately in the caucus room. And finally, Mr. President, some of us may have heard the tragic story last week of a young man named Malik Kelly, who happened to live in my district, actually two blocks from me, and he was a fourth grade student at the Penny Packer School. And last night, residents of our community gather en masse for a visual that was hosted by the Penny Packer School family. I want you to know that after visiting with Malik's mother and her family, that Malik was a smart and caring young man who had a very bright future. He could have been the next Thurgood Marshall or Mark Zuckerberg, but unfortunately, he won't get that opportunity because last week, his mother Tanisha found him in his room after he had taken his own life. And when I was sitting with Tanisha last week, you realize, all of us, that this is Malik's story today, but it could be the story of any student or young person tomorrow unless we continue to say, no more bullying. Now, while I know the district has a very, very stringent policy, however, I just want to read a couple of facts. One, and this is according to the National Education Association, the Pacer Center, and the StopBullying.gov, one in seven students in grades K through twelve are either a bully or have been a victim of bullying. One in seven. An estimated one hundred and sixty thousand U.S. children miss school every day due to the fear of attack or intimidation from other students. Nearly nine out of ten LGBTQ youth report being verbally harassed at school, and six out of ten teenagers say that they witnessed bullying in school once a day. With that being said, I want to say a special thanks to the members of this body who have long raised awareness regarding this issue, which is why, Mr. President, this crisis occurred, but there was no need to introduce a resolution in this body about it to raise awareness because council members Blackwell, Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Gimm prior to her joining this body, Councilman O and even former Councilman Dennis O'Brien, working with the school district and the police department and our Office of Safe Schools Advocates. You've already raised awareness about this issue, but what Malik's circumstances remind us of is that bullying has serious adverse educational effects, that students who are targets often experience extreme stress that can lead to the symptoms of physical illness, diminish their ability to learn, and it can translate into increased absenteeism and impaired performance. So while we keep Tanisha and Malik's family and friends and our thoughts and prayers, we also need to keep our thoughts on what we can do to say no more to bullying. We have campaigns about domestic violence. We need to continue to raise awareness about this issue of bullying, and we should say no more. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, for your patience.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I want to take the opportunity to thank all the voters on the referendums today. One, that was, was a creation of your due diligence. You did, you know, a fantastic job with that, and I appreciate what you do, and you recognizing the opportunity for, you know, the, I think, the same mission of revitalizing our neighborhoods, creating jobs, and in sync with this body and city council. You know, when we have elected council members who know their neighborhoods and know, you know, their unique qualities in redevelopment with the impact it's going to be, you achieved just that with that initiative. So, you know, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And the voters spoke. They also spoke about best value, and, you know, I too want to thank, you know, Councilman Green and other members of this council body. The voters overwhelmingly saw the need and clear transparent process that helps modernize our city and streamlines our way that we use our products and, or purchase our products and our services for local citizens and local businesses right here in the city of Philadelphia as we continue to try to encourage LBEs, community groups, and vendors to encourage them to be a part of our city procurement. It allows now the city to take a look at different factors when awarding contracts, such as past performances and similar work, the ability to partner in joint ventures, and, most important, the ability to reach our diversity goals that this body and our administration wants to, wants to see accomplished, in addition to price. All right, so it's not the lowest, and it's not the only thing. I would be taking consider, you know, us Philadelphians. So, thank you for that. I introduced a bill today that I think other members have a lot of concern with, especially, you know, Councilwoman Parker. We talk about our commercial quarters. We talk about different ways to improve blight, you know, such as, you know, bandit signs and political signs, as Councilwoman Parker just noted. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, our neighborhoods reflect the quality and integrity and dignity that we represent, and we do that through policies that we create here and definitions of portable signs and waving these feather flags and portable banners and pendants and moving devices really can, I think, clutter when they're in a rights away and really take away from the product and the people, all right, that we're trying to connect with when we, you know, are making our commercial quarters walkable, presentable, and usable, and inviting for, for all citizens. So, you know, look forward to having hearings on that and working with every member. And lastly, this is National Police Week nationally and especially here in the city of Philadelphia, so I want to thank Lodge Five, all its retirees, its current officers who make the sacrifice every single day. They go out in the morning, they go out at night, whatever shift that they're on, not knowing if they're going to come back. So, if there are memorials and events that are taking place during the course of this week, I know which they were, we just want to say, you know, thank you and continue to make sure that, you know, our community policing is reflective of who we are as a community, all right, but there needs to be respect for our law officers as we try to transition into modern-day policing, all right, because ultimately, we want a safe environment, we want a safe community that we can raise our families and so our kids can go to school here and they can stay here and be employed here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President. Today is Haitian Flag Day, and I just wanted to make a few remarks about it as I talked very briefly last week, but the Haitian people have a long tradition of freedom and struggle. They rose up to end slavery and established the first free black state in the modern world. They've resisted a continuous onslaught of economic exploitation and abandonment by imperial powers. But the reality today is that Haiti also is recovering from the effects of a devastating earthquake that killed three hundred thousand people, displaced more than a million, and then was followed by a more recent devastating hurricane, effects that have been exacerbated by ineffective and sometimes self-serving aid work, and many Haitian ref- by ineffective and sometimes self-serving aid work, and many Haitian refugees have found safety and a home in the United States. Nearly sixty thousand Haitians have been able to live, work, and prosper here thanks to a federal program that offers them temporary protected status. Many of these Haitian people now live in and around Philadelphia. Not only does TPS ensure refuge and safety in the wake of humanitarian emergencies, but TPS also generates dearly needed economic resources for families back in Haiti. By enabling Haitians to work and contribute to the United States, TPS also allows them to send remittances home to support their families and communities as they work to rebuild. This status currently is in danger of being taken away if the Department of State and Homeland Security do not renew the program before July twenty-second. And if the federal departments choose not to act, many Haitians, including those in our own city of Philadelphia, will be forced to leave the United States. Returning to Haiti now would be catastrophic for so many families. Last year, Hurricane Matthew inflicted further infrastructure damage on the already struggling country, leading to severe food shortages and further burdening an already insufficient medical system. I joined Mayor Kenny and leaders from across the country in calling upon Secretaries Tillerson and Kelly to extend the TPS program and continue to support our Haitian neighbors, brothers, and sisters in Philadelphia and across the country. And on Haitian Flag Day, I feel like that's the way to honor our brotherhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just two brief announcements. Today at three o'clock, down in the Stadium Special Services District at Leven Finn Patterson Avenue, we will be renaming thirty-six-hundred block of Eleventh Street after philanthropist and Flyers owner and founder, Ed Snyder. We will be honoring his memory not only for being the owner of one of our premier sports franchises here in the city of Philadelphia, but most importantly, for his contribution as a philanthropist to the Ed Snyder Youth Hockey League and the other contributions he has made while he served as the founder of the Flyers hockey team. And so we will be honoring him at three P.M. Anyone wants to come out to participate and honor his life, dear more than welcome to attend. And tomorrow at Verre Recreation Center is our annual job fair from eleven A.M. to two P.M. So we encourage people to come, dress for success with a can-do attitude to gain full employment as well as a career. So, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. We continue to do that great work in your councilmatic district. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to mention the flag raising for Haiti and to note that after the raising on the northeast corner, there will be reception with food in the mayor's conversation hall. Flag raising is supposed to be twelve-thirty to one, and then one to two, the reception. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes our speeches on the majority and the minority, and the chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, at ten A.M.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. The council stand adjourn until Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, ten A.M. All those in favor say aye. Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.